Seven oh three P M on Tuesday, July, I mean, September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. And so this is a virtual Zoom meeting of the zoning board of Cohasset. And we'll call it to order and when our sixth member shows up, we will obviously announce him, but right now the person who's speaking is me, Woody Chidick as Chair of the Zoning Board. Why don't we all chime in and acknowledge ourselves?
Dave McMorris.
Dave is Vice Chair. Go ahead.
Lee Darst.
Okay, Lee.
Michael Dickey.
Michael Dickey.
Matt Watkins.
Matt Watkins and sitting in, of course, is John Hallen, our Building Inspector. And there, I think the board probably has a couple of questions, John, not related so much to this upcoming single hearing, but just, you know, status reports and a couple of projects, and you can probably brief us after this next hearing is concluded. So it's a special permit filed by Clark Brewer to build a bedroom dormer in a living room addition to a single-family residence at two eighty-five A North Main Street. Because the house is non-conforming, it's not terribly important, but the application talks about the house being non-conforming because the east side setback is non-conforming. Well, so too is front, and so too is lot with. But be that as it may, these are, I think Clark can probably explain to us that they're exempted. But at any rate, let's see. What? Sorry, Charlie's here?
Charlie's with us. And I, I can't find a plot plan with all this stuff.
Yeah, you know, it was in the second page, it not very easily read, page A two. It's got, it's got a, an original kind of photocopy of an A and R that subdivided these two lots back in two thousand and thirteen, I think it is. But its orientation is, is one way and the proposal proposed orientation or proposed activity on this property is oriented another way. It's not easy.
Yeah, I don't see the location of any of the adjacent.
Yeah, no, I know. I know. And, and the location, yeah, and that assessor's map reproduction, you know, which would shows thirty or forty lots or probably at least fifty, sixty lots doesn't, doesn't fit the bill either. So it doesn't really comply with our filing requirements. Well, I guess two options, we could, you know, just, you know, summarily extend it or continue it, or we could open the hearing and continue, but, but predicate it all on the fact that we need a site plan that conforms to our regulations. What do you folks think? We certainly are not going to make a decision tonight in either case.
I went there and I found it very difficult to, to locate myself and the house and the changes. And also it doesn't show any of the neighbors and the distances from their sideline, which we require.
So I was. That's a, that's a good point. So I, I, I think before we were to, before we close the hearing, we need in front of us, and I don't think it's going to be closed tonight anyway, but we need in front of us a site plan that complies with our regulations. This clearly did not. And, and everything shown has to be, have the same orientation. Doesn't do much good to show, you know, an upside down orientation of a lot and then you know, wandered around, but Dave, do, do, do you see A two?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I do, but I mean, you know, the, one of the setbacks on one of the sides is two feet. And I think it's important to know where the building next door is.
Okay, well, why don't we say that, well, I mean, does the board or does it not feel comfortable with proceeding with the hearing, knowing that we're going to need a site plan that complies with our regs before any, you know, substantive deliberation begins? Or is it impossible, you know, should we hear out the applicant, application or not?
I think we should, but I don't think anybody's here yet for the applicant.
They are.
Oh, they are? Okay.
They're in the waiting room.
I would hope so, because the agenda's for seven and it's now seven o'clock.
Do you want me to pull them in?
Yeah, I mean, my thought would be that they, that they would have a robust presentation to show us, which might be helpful to kind of orientate ourselves a little bit more. We're going to certainly need some follow-up items for the, from, but I was.
No question, but I, I, I think we might take advantage of the time and and, and hear from the applicant or applicant's representative and and if it's too confused because of the materials submitted, we can just move, move on until October.
I think to Matt's point, I think there's no foundation work being done or added to. So I think all the work that they're talking about is on the existing structure in the existing footprint. So the, the, I think the volume is what is increasing on the existing footprint. So maybe at least you get the, the applicant, the list of what they might need.
Yeah, that may or may not be correct. Let, let's wait and hear from, from the applicant's rep because on the proposed plan, which is A two, they talk about a living room addition. So, you know, I, I can understand the, the dormer stuff, you know, not requiring a new you know, foundation or modification, but I think we've got to hear about this proposed living room addition as well as, as what's being applied for. So why not, Montana, why don't we, why don't we begin the applicant and or the applicant's representative has the mic. Okay, Clark Brewer.
Clark, do you want me to bring anyone else in that's in the waiting room for you?
Yeah, Walter Sullivan and Samuel Green, the owner.
Okay, they're pulled in.
So we'll let Walter do the introductions. And then I can chime in on the technical things.
Okay. And, and Walter, why don't you introduce yourself and your, your role or relationship in this application?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Walter Sullivan. I'm an attorney from Norwell. And I represent the owner applicant Sam Green on this special permit application under section eight point seven. And with me, of course, is Clark Brewer, the project architect. The property is located at two eighty-five A North Main Street. It's a single-family residence in the Residence A District. It's a twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five square foot lot containing a one thousand, five hundred, fifty-five square foot home. We propose to have a three hundred and six square foot addition, which will be a bedroom dormer on the second floor and slightly increasing the living room on the first floor. The property is non-conforming on the side setback to the east, which is only two feet. But this, this addition will not increase the non-conformity. We respectfully submit, we think we meet the criterion for a section eight finding, specifically that the extension is not increasing the non-conformity. And it's not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformity of the structure. And it's not injurious or harmful to the other properties in the neighborhood. I think it might be helpful, perhaps Clark, if you wanted to share the screen and just take the board through what we propose to do. That might be instructive if the, if the chair thinks it would be helpful.
Yeah, let me, let me pull that up. Okay, I've got a hosted disabled participant screen sharing.
One second.
Yeah.
Okay, you can go to try now.
Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Mm-hmm. I can.
Okay, great. So what, what I did was I, I'm for the, for this application, I modified the permit drawings. What we have is a, a, a site that slopes off to the south very steeply. And the house is in the, the northeast corner. Let me see if I can. We, we have a A and R plan from two thousand and three and
Thirteen, two thousand and thirteen.
Two thousand and thirteen, thank you. And we've got an addition right here, and then we're adding a dormer. And then I'm, I've got existing conditions plans, elevations. So this, this is the this is the second floor plan. We're not adding any square footage, but in this area, we're matching the dormer on the, on the, on the west side, which is a roof line increase of about thirty inches. That's just from here to here. And then, and then this area here is the addition. We pulled it off of the property line to five feet so that we don't have fire rating issues. So this, John Halen reminded me that we've got, when you're inside five feet from a property line, you you need to have fire rating attention as well as window openings can be only a certain area. So I've got a, a marked up roof plan with, with the red showing what's, what's in the setback in, in both the dormer at the front and the addition at the back. Are there any questions? Oh, another point is that this, this rear addition does not exceed the, the fifteen foot current height for structures within the, within the setback at twelve foot and change significantly less than the fifteen feet.
Is that new?
This is, this piece is all new.
And is it attached?
And then this shows the dormer. Yeah, it's attached right here in the back. And then this is the piece of dormer that's thirty inches higher. This, this area and this, this part of the building is, is taller than the fifteen feet, but it's existing non-conforming at nineteen feet to the peak within the, within the setback. I know you guys have the drawings. This isn't a particularly interesting elevation here. But it is just a few feet from the property line and it's heavily vegetated to the butter.
And how far is the butter?
How far, well, let's see. Quite a ways. Actually, their house is up in here. You can see, it doesn't show up on the plan, but it's, it's towards the front of the site.
Yeah, there's, there's some construction and work going on. There was a backhoe there today, I think. So they're doing some construction. It's pretty close.
She's putting a bathroom in the rear shed she has. They constructed that shed probably about fifteen to twenty years ago, and she recently got approved about a bathroom.
Okay, well, I assume that you guys overheard the, the sidebar conversation that we need to have a site plan that complies with our regulations. We can, don't have to go into all that right now. It's not very hard, but one of the elements is that you show neighbors on both sides if they're within two hundred feet. Or anybody, anybody within, in that.
The only plan I had to work with was the Neil Murphy's A and R plan from ten years ago.
Okay, well, it'll have to be re redone to a degree because our, our regulations require it. And in doing it, it would be helpful to either reorient, you know, north and south in that one, or reorient the north and south in your drawing. I'll leave that up to you, but it's, it's, it makes it unnecessarily complicated, at least to me, to be looking at, at sort of a one orientation and the other is a hundred and eighty degrees opposite. I mean, it's not impossible, but.
Well, Woody, whether we have the, the survey redone to incorporate abutting buildings, does it change anything in terms of the special permit?
We don't know.
Is this just a, you gotta check off this box in order to be even heard?
Yeah, I mean, you, you know, you filed an application and under the site plan, questions on the application. It says, gee, boundary lines, names of owners, locations, dimensions of all buildings, driveways and parking areas on all immediately adjacent properties. And it's even highlighted on the application. So you see that it's important and the answer here is yes on the application, but the actual answer is no. The reason that we need it, particularly when there's something that's on two feet from the property line, is we need to know where the buildings are next door. And I understand you're representing that it's far away, but we actually need to see it on a stamped plan, site plan.
Okay, Neil, Neil Murphy's firm no longer exists, so that would require a new survey.
Yeah, I would, I would say that, that's so. Clark, that, that shouldn't inhibit you explaining what you're doing tonight, but it is going to delay the decision of this board until we have in hand a site plan that we can, you know, that complies.
Well, I think, you know, we wouldn't have a decision tonight. We usually.
Yeah, we wouldn't either anyway, you know, but, but whether they could have a.
But I guess we have to come up with the verbiage for why it's not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood and we would have to reference how close the nearest abutters are.
Yeah, so I mean, I think we could, we could ask questions about the proposed construction, but the burden is on the applicant to have a, have a, a site plan done, a new site plan, showing both the existing and proposed and neighbors. I mean, you know, that can be done for October, whatever it is, first to second, great. If it can't be done by then, we can just, you know, we're not opposed to this, I think, but it, but it can be continued. What kind of, what kind of concerns does the board have about the proposal? Yes, it goes a, a new construction in back. It's agreed. It's less intrusive into the setback than the existing structure. And the dormer itself doesn't seem to, again, create a new or exacerbate a non-conformity. Am I reading that right, Clark? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but.
Yeah, that's, that's right. I mean, it's a de minimis roof line extension on the, on the east dormer with no additional square footage. Just a little bit more headroom in the upstairs bedroom. And then the addition is farther away than the closest point.
That addition's in the, what we're calling the rear, right? The rear.
Yeah, or the south side.
But, but the, the rear, I mean, that's to answer Matt's question. I think the answer is yes.
Fifteen feet, that applies on the side setbacks, right? I mean, not that, it looks like there's plenty of rare foot, rare setback anyways at a hundred and twenty point nine feet, but wouldn't, wouldn't that be you know, a change to the rear setback versus the fifteen foot height, I said. That was for the side setback.
The
Am I making sense?
Yeah, there's no change to the, to the side setback. We're, we're farther away with the new construction.
Well, you're not, you're not increasing the non-conformity, but you are certainly building within the setback. Right? Because the setback is ten feet to the sidelines of its lot.
That's right. We're not, we're not getting closer than the existing two feet.
Okay, so to my mind, the issue is it's increasing mass within the setback, not exacerbating the present setback, which is, you know, in your favor, but it nevertheless is adding mass within the setback of ten feet, if this is truly less than fifteen feet high.
Yes.
What about, if the orientation is, if this is to the south, and of course you've got this curved driveway, which is interesting in and of itself, since it, it really kind of accesses over somebody else's property or the neighbor in front's property. What about structures to the left? To the, to the west, or the immediate west? It's obviously not on the plan, but.
There's, there's an existing deck on the west side of the house, and then there's multiple sheds to the south or up on the, on the A and R plan.
And what about the neighbor to the west?
This neighbor over here, that's, that's that fairly new house that got built right in here. The, the, it has a circular driveway, like this.
I mean, I would agree from both the site visit and, and looking at the plan, that the issue really, if there is an issue, it would be the neighbor to the east, not to the west.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think there's, the, the, the other neighbors' structures aren't particularly close to the property line on the east side. I can, I can pull up Google Earth if you want, or you may have it open right now.
Some additional context, if it's helpful, if I may add. So this house is behind the house in front. So the house in front was my grandmother's house, my great-grandparents' house, and this was in the back. It was originally a barn. It was converted to a house around nineteen fifty so that my grandmother could raise my dad and family in it. And so the neighbor's houses are both in line with the front house, and this one is considerably set back far from the street, which is why the neighboring dwellings are, are pretty far from.
Perhaps, yeah. I mean, I because it isn't on the plan, I can't, I, it appeared to me when I was there that, that the, the construction work going on for the neighbor at the east was pretty, pretty far back.
A garden shed.
Well, I don't know. See, I don't know what was going on there. Because I didn't know, I didn't have the orientation. Well, I mean, we have to consider the impact in the neighborhood, but I can understand that this is a strange lot, to say the least. You don't have a lot of flexibility, particularly with that, with those rock outcroppings, which are humongous.
Yeah, there's not a lot of options. Certainly to the west side is a, is a four thousand ton ledge outcropping that it's hard to imagine.
Biggest I've seen in Cohasset.
Yeah, but, but work with it and try and find other, other places to, to do the work.
Well, since we need a site plan, we're going to continue it anyway, but board, do we, what other, what would we like to see beside the neighboring properties on, on a revised site plan?
Have we heard from the neighbors? They don't have to come again if they.
No, I'll ask both Clark and Montana. Clark, have you heard? Do you have any documentation?
I, I know that, you know, Sam is close to his, his neighbors. He's, he's probably talked to him already about, about this. I haven't heard any, any comments, negative or otherwise.
Okay, Montana, what do we have?
No comments.
Okay.
I've known the neighbor to, to the east my whole life. She's been in there since the, the mid eighties and I was born in the early nineties and, and grew up here. She's supportive of it. She's happy to see, I think, some, some positive changes come with the property. And the neighbor in the front closer to the street is also super supportive.
There, there is a dividing fence between your, between A two eighty-five A and two eighty-five that seems to be slouched over a bit. I, I, I'm not convinced at all that it provides the right kind of, you know, privacy or, or separation. Do you have plans to improve that? That may not be on your property. I don't know. I mean.
It's shared. So the, the plan is, so there is a, a tree that has sort of pushed it over on one side. I have already hired a tree service to, to mitigate that and will replace the fence at that point in time.
Okay. And I don't know which tree. There's a spruce tree or something in the front.
It's a blue spruce, yes.
Okay. I think that would be important because things are pretty tight. I mean, when, when you, when you look at a bird's eye view, you've got a lot of twenty-four thousand square feet, but I mean, at least half of it is either rock or or more than half of it is, is, is ledge and then this fall off down to the railroad track. So it's a much smaller lot than it would appear. So I think so, you know, privacy considerations would be important here.
Yes, to that end, we used to have about a fifteen foot hedge separating us from the neighbor to the east. She has, you know, made the decision to trim that back, but there is still an ample amount of, of sort of plant cover that provides a lot of privacy from the east. The west side is completely forested. You can hardly see anything from the neighbor to the west.
I agree. I, I, I think it would be helpful, just here we are in A two, to show what kind of either, either fencing or landscaping you're, you're going to do, particularly in the front or where, where your lot, lot A abuts regularly, two eighty-five. And I'd like to build that into a decision that you will, I mean, I, I can understand why you'd want to. It's not that I'm accusing you of, of not wanting to do it, but I would like to see it depicted in a plan so we can cite it. And it would protect everybody. And, and that goes for whatever you have planned for the east or east side. The western side is.
Sam, I can put a, a note on, on, on my plan or the surveyor could, could add that to the proposed plan.
But yeah, there, there is an existing stone wall that divides the two properties, um, on top of which currently is a six-foot fence. That has a slight lean to the north due to that tree, which will be repaired or replaced.
And, and we haven't heard from the, from the neighbor in the front, is that a relative of yours, or is it?
No, her name is Heather Commerford, um, she's lived there since I believe twenty fifteen, um. We sold the house to, uh, I believe her or her mother, and she's lived there since with her two kids, um. And friendly with her the whole time, um. Spoke with her last week, she was on the site, so.
Okay, so we, we've heard no, uh, nothing of concern from her or nothing negative, but okay. I mean, it's up to her to, she has any points of view in this to come forward, we're not. Going to solicit her. Um, board, what, what other questions would you like to see or depict it either on the? Uh, to be on the proposed plan or the current site plan? As, as it will be revised.
I just have one question about the, on the um. A seven and a six, um, it references phase two. And is that significant or just?
Yeah, phase two is um, uh, what we're reviewing now. Phase one was the, you know, conforming interior renovation work. So I, I said in the beginning that I, I, I just took the, the permit plans and, and modified them for the. For the purposes of uh explaining the project to the, to the zoning board.
Hey. What else, board? I mean, is there anything about the uh, um, addition to the living room that? You know, uh, is concerning or, or requires more explanation or not? We comfortable with that? No, I guess. Nobody's speaking. Uh, Charlie, go ahead.
I thought to begin with, they said there was gonna be no new foundation, but what's that new living room gonna be on?
Uh, I didn't say there was no, no new foundation, that, that, that living room is on a new foundation. And that's a, that's a, uh, uh, an all-new extension of the living room. It's sixteen six by seventeen four.
And, and it looks like it's a solid foundation as opposed to pilings. That's the way I would see the drawing.
Yep, that's the way to do it. Ten inches of concrete and a real footing.
Does that answer your question, Charlie?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, it sounded like it was gonna be floating.
Okay, so it'll be a solid concrete foundation.
What will be the total square footage when the house is completely finished?
Um, let's see.
Three hundred and nine square feet?
Uh, three hundred and six plus the, plus the fifteen fifty-five. Um, so, uh, um. But about a little over eighteen hundred square feet.
Look, I thought the existing structure was somewhere in the thirteen hundred ballpark. And I think that fifteen hundred might include the new section, am I wrong?
First, first floor living area is five oh six and. Um, total living area existing is fifteen fifty-five. So fifteen fifty-five plus three oh six.
So it's a twenty percent increase.
Plus the new uh, plus the new rear.
That, the three oh six is the new rear. This is the three oh six here.
Okay.
And there's no change to the square footage of either the first floor or the second floor of the existing.
What, the dormers?
Yeah, the dormer doesn't change the square footage. Just makes it so you can put a piece of furniture against the wall.
Well, um, with no further questions, then I would um. Make a motion to continue the hearing until October third. Um, particularly if, if a um site plan that complies with our regulations. Can be uh submitted at that point. If not, we'll just have to continue it again, but we'll leave that up to you.
Okay, and, and typically you'd wanna see that a week ahead of the.
Exactly, yeah, so because we're starting late, we lost a week at the beginning of September. Um, you know, so that, that puts a little bit of compression uh on this. We have three weeks until that October third.
We'll see what we can do.
Yeah, and um. I can appreciate. You know, that, that may be tight, but well. Why don't we shoot for October third, and if, if you can't make it, you can't make it, but we'll. That'll be our, our target at this point. Okay, so board, I've made a motion to continue the hearing until October third. Um, for any other submissions. That may, may be coming, um. The only submission we know of is the site plan. Um, we haven't heard from neighbors, uh, they're not required to comment, so. That's about all I could expect to hear be, beyond the site plan. And that property is remote. John, do you have anything to add to this?
Uh, no, I, I think uh he's taken care of some of the questions I had regarding the uh fire rating on the wall. And uh, if they do have a chance to, you know, have a, a, a note from the neighbors, it might not be a bad idea, uh, if they have a comment. Might help the board.
Yeah. I mean, it is a small, small lot, I, I. I've been in Cohasset for over fifty years, and I never knew this place existed. I kind of prided myself on knowing most. Most of the uh. You know, built areas, but th- this was a total surprise to me, so. It would help to know the neighbor in front and the neighbor to the east. Neighbor to the west, I don't think is impacted, cannot, it's just not, not possible.
Yeah, I believe the neighbor in the east is in favor of it, uh, she was in my office on another matter, but.
Okay, well, that, that would be fine. I mean, it would be helpful to have something like that in the file. For future reference, but, you know, if she's willing to, you know, make some declaration, great.
Now, other than that, I, I think uh, you know, the other information the board requested is, is uh, should clarify it.
Okay, so, okay, the motion still stands, it's move, I've moved to continue, do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, seconded by Lee Darst, all in favor, Woody Chitikai.
Lee Darst, aye.
Uh, Michael Dickey, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Okay, move and seconded, we'll see you all.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, good. Um, the next piece of business. And I'd like to talk to the board first about process or procedure. Rather than dig into substance. Um, we have one article that I feel is kind of ready for a primetime review, article. This is article four, which is uh uses, article five, which is dimensional. They still haven't finalized the table and things, and I think it's, in my estimation, very difficult to. Um, evaluate some of the text without understanding the, the linkage, so we can, I would recommend that we. Table that for, for a moment, doesn't have to be forever, but uh by any stretch of the imagination. But there's an awful lot in article four. And uh, we could either, and I sent everybody on the board um yesterday, but late. Um, uh, observations and comments on article four. Um, some of which I think can be fixed with editing wording, et cetera, some of which are substantive. And it may in fact take us longer than. We'd like to, to go through some of those comments, I'd, I'd certainly. Wanna put comments in a bucket, uh, two buckets, one of which is, yeah, let's see if we can fix it, but it's not a drop dead. Issue, and there's something, and there's another pile. That uh really consists of uh substantive concerns. Um, I'd also propose that we probably set, give ourselves a time limit. If we have to have a special meeting by Zoom, uh, so be it. I mean, I, I, I. But um, if we could get through it all, the better, but I don't wanna sort of stretch this thing out to the wee hours. When we're all half-brained dead. What, what's, what's the board's feeling on, on both? Taking a run at, at, um, maybe we could take a hop, skip and a jump quickly through article four and my comments, but set aside the. Things that could be addressed either editorially or whatever versus. Um, as I say, sort of really substantive matters, and then setting a time limit. Could be an hour, could be an hour and a half, I'd recommend not going more than that. Board, somebody speak.
Sounds good to me.
Why don't we uh set a timeline? Do we wanna do an hour, an hour and a half? And, and because we can always have, have another meeting, I mean, I, I really. You know, it doesn't have to be October third. It comes to that. I just, I just don't wanna get it, get us all sort of, you know, exhausted.
Are, are you suggesting it may be we have a, a special? Uh, uh, be a meeting solely dedicated to the uh.
Yeah, one, one of two kinds of meetings occurred to me, either that, that we have a meeting dedicated solely to this article. Or two, that everybody takes a week or two to digest what they hear, are going to hear tonight. And then we take a vote as to whether we're in favor or not in favor, or who's sustaining, who's, you know, blah, blah, blah. Um, because it's asking an awful lot of people to, to read stuff in, in less than twenty-four hours. And then, and then make a decision, I think. I'd, I'd rather.
When is the town meeting that?
What?
Or I guess when's the warrant deadline?
Yeah, well, I don't know, Montana? Do you know the mo- warrant deadline, or do you know, Tom?
It's right after the planning board's hearing.
But when, when is that?
Twenty seventh.
Of this month?
Yes.
And when is the town meeting?
Town meeting is November thirteenth. I mean, the deadline for printing may be in early October because. The planning board, you know, we're anticipating at the moment that maybe we'll need our meeting on October fourth to deal with, continue the hearing. It's not long after that.
So.
So would you?
Work backwards.
Would you plan then to, to present us the language, have a discussion on it, but then try to vote in October?
Um, you, you can do what you want, I, I, my plan tonight is to go over these comments on this two-page comment sheet because. If I may, it, it expresses disappointment with the. CBC, well, let me express my disappointment, Woody and you in saying this stuff and. Really denigrating the work of the committee, and I first and foremost want to defend the work of the committee. And I think you're not understanding the process that we've been subjected to. Or, and not understanding some of the language that's in the bylaw, and I, you know, unfortunately, the judge couldn't be here tonight because she had a. Minor surgical procedure, but you know, I'm here to try to explain it, and I'll go over these two pages. And then you can take it from there as to what you wanna do. I know Woody's made comments. On the, a draft. Um, you know, that's pages and pages and pages, and we can go through, start going through some of those as well, but. I, I, you know, I wanna take issue to this summary here, which I'm just deeply disappointed in. Well, I'm trying to be diplomatic, you know.
I know you are.
I have other emotions besides disappointment, but uh.
Well, you know, you're not.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think it's fair how you characterize the work of the committee. And I'm not, nor do I think it's fair for one person to think they can just blow this all up in town meeting.
That they can what?
David would like to say something, he's been raising his hand for a minute, so let's let him speak.
Go ahead, Dave.
Oh, tha- thank you, David Farag, um, and I'm on the, the zoning bylaw committee uh as well, thirty-nine Beechwood Street. Um, when you were talking about how to maybe take a look at this, I think one of the things would be is that. Uh, you know, you could go over some of it tonight, or, or take a chance to digest it and. And uh come back with another meeting, but I would say, uh, unfortunately, Judge Cutler couldn't be here tonight because she's had a, a minor surgery. But when she is back in the mend, I think before the board votes on it, or if they have any other questions or rewrite something. Uh, they should get the judge to come to your meeting, because if anything is rewritten. To say, well, jeez, we don't like this part, let's re, reword it to this, it could affect other parts of the bylaws, as you, as you well know, like dominoes, so. I, I think before a final vote is taken to have the judge come, uh, and then go through it, and then she would also. Uh, maybe have some comments, you know, regarding case law or things like that, for why things are written the, the way they are. Uh, before you, before you make a final decision on it, um, and I'm, and there are, there are lots of things that there's. You know, there's leeway with, and it's a matter of, you know, policy over, over, over um. Uh, you know, a case law, but I do think to have her come uh before, before you make your, your, your final decisions would be appropriate. Thank you.
Yeah, that, I would be quite happy, I'm, I'm, but what's running around in my mind, I didn't realize that the. Final planning board meeting is on the twenty-seventh of this month, which is two weeks away essentially. And um, it's not giving us a lot of time to uh digest and, and um. Have another hearing, et cetera. That's, that's, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, I, I, I certain. I, I wish.
Let's, let's go through your comments to try to, to try to address some of the comments made and some of what I believe are misconceptions.
Okay. And if they're misconceptions and the board agrees, then I'd be more than happy to take those, put those aside into another bucket. Or, or delete them. But board, how, how much time do we wanna devote tonight? It, it feels to me like we're gonna have to meet again on this. And then the question is when, and if it, if it's after the twenty-seventh, the warrant, warrant will be in.
I, I, don't hold me to the twenty-seventh as the date, I, that's probably early October, but I don't know.
Well, all the better.
I do know the town, I do know the town meeting is the thirteenth, and usually printing. Is about a month ahead of that.
Okay, Montana, why don't we kind of uh park that for tomorrow, maybe you can check uh within town hall as to the. Actual official close date, and we'll work backwards.
Okay, I will let you know first thing in the morning.
Okay.
I think we should put a timeline, it was nine o'clock, that gives us an hour and ten minutes.
Okay. Anybody else, contrary point of view?
That sounds good, and I think what we would give Tom the floor to kind of present.
Sure.
They're out with it, and then we would then review your comments and the rest of our comments if we have any. That make sense?
Yeah. Makes sense to me. So Tom, do you wanna take the floor and? Talk about some of the, that, you know, some of the um, no, you can.
Well, first of all, let me, let me point out a little history that Woody, you will know. You know, first we had the working group. And the working group's charge was rather broad. And we and the working group certainly took it. That we were writing, rewriting the bylaw from top to bottom. We had no legal help outside the lawyers on the board, we had no town council to help us, we had no expert. Insultant to help us, we had nothing, and. I did take the liberty to start as a discussion point to rewrite it from top to bottom, and it was very comprehensive, a lot of change. Consistency in terms throughout wasn't perfect, was throwing it out there to start discussion. And we never really did. And then the board blew up for what a number of reasons, and we had a number of resignations, including yours, Woody. And the select board took charge of this and reconstituted it as the bylaw committee. And they changed the charge, they brought in KP Law. And we have the help of Judge Cutler, who's former chief justice of the land court. And I don't think whose expertise in this matter can be questioned. And um, their charge limited us basically to doing housekeeping. Of agreeing that the bylaw is a mess, a total mess, top to bottom. Uh, you may recall, you may have seen, I think Woody, you have seen, uh, the diagnostic that KP did of each and every article in the bylaw. Uh, Judge Cutler has been working off that diagnostic. Particularly with article four. And um, that's how we have been proceeded, and. And I will tell you for myself personally, I've wanted. Much more change, much of what I've written, I keep advocating for, it's been ignored in my view, but I don't care if the judge was here to see it. Hear that, she's heard it before, but they are, the judge is convinced that KP's charge is limited. And so we are taking these steps of dealing with some. Mess in the bylaw that we dealt with last spring with definitions being all over the place, and now we're dealing with it. At Article Four and, you know, the preface to her. Diagnostic for Article Four was that it was a wholesale mess and needed to be fixed quite a bit. And that is what she has proposed to us. And she does not believe that she has a mandate or that the committee has a mandate for radical, radical change. Now. Article Five, the changes that are proposed for Article Five. And we finalized those last night and she's putting it in warrant form, uh. Warrant article form. Um, Article Five's changes are mostly housekeeping. In connection with these Article Four changes. We are not making. Any substantive changes as Woody, you'll recall, we talked way back in the working group regarding. Possible review of frontage setbacks.
Frontage in particular, sure.
House size, yes, that is not being done at this time.
Well, I, I, I'm just curious. Tom, just as a sidebar, I'm curious, why would the town want to go through? All, all the time you guys have invested in this and money, I'm sure Judge Cutler is not. Why would they want to do all this for? Basically a reorganization, but nothing substant- well, very loosely.
You would have to, unfortunately, the select board is occupied tonight and I wish one of them were here. But you'd have to ask them that question as to why they limited the scope. And we have a select board representative. Uh, from the working group, it's carried forward to the bylaw committee, same person, and. I, you know. They, they, they changed the charge and it, believe me, you know, you should know that it upsets me because I wanted far more comprehensive change. And I have kept saying to the committee, and Dave can confirm, and if Clark's still out there, he can confirm. That for the spring, there's stuff coming. That is, this spring is when we would deal with any substance, I'm not saying they're going to be made, but we're going to study and. Perhaps review substantive change in Article Five. And then we have perhaps a new climate initiative. We may look at. Cluster development or floodplain bylaw, you know, but the judge also reminded us last night that. You know, for, for example, Article Seven, parking and off-street parking, um, I mean, uh, yeah, parking, uh, we. She, we still have to deal with her diagnostics, so she looks at Article Seven as something that still needs just fixing rather than substantive change, yet. We have talked about and we are going to ask somebody to study whether our parking regulations are up to the state of the art, so we may have change. Uh, as part of this Article Four, there is some substantive change in it and part of. I'll get to what the objectives of Article Four were going back two and a half years, but. I mentioned it last night, Dave could confirm at our meeting last night that. If necessary, as soon as town meeting's over, got to have a heart-to-heart with the select board about changing scope. So that we can do something more because. After this round, we have done the housekeeping we need to do, in, in my opinion. Um, we've reformed Article Two, Article One, Article Twelve, Four and Five, somewhat Article Three. Um, but you know, there was going to be a substantive change to Article Three I pitched and, and we got caught by two things. One, the summer where we had tough times getting forums. And by the way, Mike's addition to that has helped immensely and I'm glad that Mike is now participating with us. I'm sure he's.
Uh, check, check, check's in the mail, Tom.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then, and then we had always operated under the assumption the town meeting was early December, then they moved it up a month. So that cut out two things for us. It cut out substantive change to Article Three that's been talked about for two and a half years. And it cut out a substantive change of putting in an impact fee by law, which the select board is hot to trot on. Um.
That's a surprise to me. I would have, but I mean, so be it.
Alright, so the select board has been very supportive of what we do, yet they still, KP. And the judge are very strictly observing this charge that limits them in their mind to. Cleaning up the bylaw and bringing it into compliance without doing radical, radical change. So that's the background to it. Now.
Well, maybe we should concentrate tonight, Tom, on substantive changes or. Subtle changes that, that have, uh, unintended, maybe intended or unintended consequences.
Yeah, and I think from some of these comments, all due respect, there's just some misreading of it, but let me. Let me explain, let me explain what the approach has been to Article Four. So. As you know, the current table of uses is a long laundry list of things, of do's and don'ts, and it's led to litigation. Woody, when we cite the example of crazy pause. It's a mess, and since the days of the working group, we have operated. Under a, uh, approach of simplifying the table of uses into broader categories. Rather than having this laundry list of uses. And that is what the judge has pitched to us and proposed to us. The list may still be long, it's maybe not as short as my version was, but it's. Going towards broader categories and then further dividing those uses into primary. And accessory. And primary uses are what are reflected in the chart. Accessory uses are not reflected in the chart, and that can explain. Your comment about home occupations, which we can get to in a minute. But that has been the approach of Article Four is to try to simplify it. Into broader categories, so there is more flexibility in the types of businesses. That can, can be located in town. We are all trying to preserve as much as possible. Our miniscule commercial tax base that is on three A, the village and in the harbor. So we, we are, we all know the impediments. We have an ocean on one side that doesn't draw big box stores, we're far from the highway. So we are, I've always used the phrase, we are in a beggars, not, can't be choosers mode, and so we are trying to create broad categories. Of uses to allow business the flexibility to locate here. Now, your comment about the change that was made by town meeting during COVID, was it twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one?
Twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, May.
The judge has made that very clear, and I wish she was here to explain it, that allowing something that is not listed as a use. By special permit is not legal. And there is immense amount of case law that supports that. She could quote them easier than I can. That the AG approved it doesn't make it legal. And we have no idea what the AG's staffing was during COVID, what they let slip through, what they didn't. But the broader use categories. Will accomplish the same result of giving us the flexibility to allow a particular use.
Well, why don't we, why don't we ju- jump right?
Please let me explain the whole approach so you understand it. So in that particular regard, even though that provision is now gone because the judge is insistent it is illegal.
Okay.
In the broader category uses, John makes the first call, as a particular use falls into, let's say, a retail use, an office use, a service use. Manufacturing, you know, those are the four main broad categories. And if someone disagrees with the building inspector, they come to you and you have that flexibility to then determine the use in the. Without the need of the special permit, but with the same end result. That if it's not, you know, pick a retail use, I want to sell widgets, that's the classic Bosco thing. Alright, so we're, selling widgets is not specifically listed in the bylaw, but retail is, and that retail is broad enough. To encompass the sale of widgets. If John says. I don't think so, and I'm not going to allow the sale of widgets, come to you, you have that flexibility. Just as if the old special permit provision was in there, you still have that flexibility. That has been the objective from day one.
That's when you have a very generalized category.
Correct. And that's been the approach from the working group that is carried forward, that, that Judge Cutler has adopted, is understood from the get-go. That that is our objective and also in just her expert analysis of the bylaw. Thought our laundry list of uses was a mess to begin with and needed to be reformed.
Tommy, you're not being consistent. Why don't you take four C? Craft shop and our artist studios are not allowed in residential districts. You can take.
A primary use.
What?
As an ex- alright, so here's the thing about home.
It doesn't say primary use, it just says use.
Alright. The, the, as I said, Article Four is broken down to primary uses and accessory uses. Under the. Description of the accessory uses. Home occupations are allowed as of right. When you refer to the table, the, as I said a moment ago, the table is only listing primary uses. An artist studio in the residential district cannot.
That was a freestanding dedicated.
Cannot be a primary use, but it is an allowed as of right accessory use. And that's the distinction she has set up was between primary and accessory. That I'm sure from her experience, she's taking from other bylaws as, as a way. As a sound way to organize the uses under Article Four. So we are not restricting home occupations at all. It's just worded differently than we're used to. Our current table takes primary uses, accessory uses, and it lists a whole laundry list of things. And it doesn't make those distinctions between what is primary and accessory. And in the judge's bo- in the judge's mind, that can lead to problems for us. So, I, you know, I'll, that, that's the explanation for the whole, whole occupation. Um, let's go to accessory dwellings. So here's the thing about accessory dwellings. We have. Expanded the ability to develop them into, um, accessory structures. And by the way, the only substantive change in Article Five is that we are. Adding a height limit for accessory structures, which our current bylaw does not have. And which we discussed quite a bit when we were discussing the new definition of height last spring. So we are expanding that. Now, the committee and, and, and the. Development of the accessory dwelling unit can survive. The death of the owner who applied for it and the debt or the sale of the property by the owner. So the new owner can get the advantage of that accessory dwelling unit. However, it has been longstanding. O-hasset policy to not allow for proliferation of apartments all over town in the residential districts. And two dwellings on a lot. So the committee. Thought that the caps that are in the AD bylaw at present of ten a year, or, or ten percent of the total. Should remain in place at least for the time being and we see how this works.
But Tom, you've had twenty years to see how it works and you've had, and we've had one request for a permit in twenty years.
Because, because of the, the, no allowing for a change in the, in the exterior and no flexibility to go build it over a separate garage. Or shed, which we are both now allowing.
David has also raised his hand for quite some time, so I would like to let him speak.
I don't know, yeah, David wants to ju- help me out here. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Uh, quickly, uh, in, for, I can't speak for everybody in the zoning bylaw committee, but I, I can speak for myself on this. Is that we realize in, in doing this with the judge is that, is that, uh, you're the ones who are going to have to, uh. E- execute the zoning bylaw and we certainly don't want to, we wanted to make it, um, congruent, not just to itself, but also to the, the, the state law. And any case law as well, and, and the judge helped out greatly on, on that front, so, uh, that's really the, the hope of it, because it's not just for this zoning. Um, committee, but also future zoning committees, while there will probably be amendments over the next ten years, you know, for who knows what. Uh, but that this zoning bylaw is going to stand for, for, you know, the years to come, so whether it's.
David, for me, where anything that I'm objecting to runs afoul of state. Uh, practice or law, because I think you're going to find quite the contrary.
Yeah, well, it was to, it was to clear up a lot of the language and confusion because that there was between it, but I will say with the ADU. That it, with the accessory dwelling units, and that's what I want to hear from the committee, that is a policy thing, and as Tom was saying, that was our thought process in going. Uh, in, in dealing with it.
Stifle or stymie a s- accessory dwelling units.
I, I think, I think it was to, we want to try to loosen it, but, but there's certainly a. A discussion of, well, how much do you want to loosen it? In other words, if you just have it as of right, then. You know, that, that could be open season, but there could be things within it that make it easier. And that's what I, I want to hear the, the zoning board, especially regarding the ADUs, because that is one of the ones that. Uh, I know the zoning committee, we were looking to loosen it up to make it easier, because we realized that the previous. Version of it, uh, just didn't work at all, and, and, and while there was good intentions when it was done, it just, it just never worked, so we're trying to find that. Um, you know, the, the, the right place to cut the board there to make, make sure that it's a, something workable. Um, and that's what we would, you know, but it's not written in stone, so we're, we're certainly able, able to amend it, but that's what we want to hear from the zoning board is what.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, and just to echo that, I don't. I don't think the town is ready to see apartments everywhere. In the residential districts and having two dwellings on a lot. I, I don't know that they're ready to go that far yet. Maybe they are, and you know, in the future, we can propose that if we get that sentiment from the community that that's what they want. But we're not getting that sentiment, there's no ground swell for this. We are trying to expand the availability of ADUs so that people do them legally, and your point about it being done illegally is well taken. I'm sure it's going on all over the place. But, um. You know, we don't feel that the town is ready to just throw it out.
What, what empirical evidence? Do you have? Citizens?
Hmm?
I mean, I, I would think you would be surveying one thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand ci- citizens.
Yeah, well, you know, I'll, I'll say this, the, the, the surveys we recently sent out about short-term rentals and ADUs. Yeah, they, they got a disappointing number of responses.
Like thirty-five responses or something.
Yeah, I, and I understand that, and it's frustrating.
Meaningless.
We don't have any, you know, media or townwide circulation to speak of. And, you know, one of the members of the planning board said, oh, you should have five hundred people coming to these forums and everything. And I said, are you kidding? You can barely get two hundred to come to town meeting. I, I, I am open to any ideas of how we can solicit a wider opinion from the community, but we. And the traditional tools and even some of the more modern tools of these doodle polls online. We are not getting the response because ninety-nine percent of the community doesn't care until it, if, impacts them, and we all know that. But if, if there's no ground swell against us doing what you want, there's no ground swell for it, none of us know, so. We are trying to take a baby step towards making these more easily to develop. Because we, we do believe in the end objective.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm saying that, that your modifications of the ADU don't go. Nearly far enough in terms of facilitating them and. My empirical evidence is that we have an awful lot of, I think a hundred and fifty to two hundred. ADUs now, only one of which is permitted. I don't mean the others are illegal, I mean, people just haven't bothered. Why, why jump through those hoops? Just do it.
Well. Again, if, if, if the community wants to go in that direction, have apartments and, you know, every other house, that's fine. I have no problem with that if that's what the community wants, but. Neither one, neither you nor our, or our committee has mandate in either direction on that, right at the moment.
Right, so I would probably recommend pulling this for the time.
Why?
Because I don't think your, your, um. Your modifications, uh, matter at all. They, they don't, they don't do anything to facilitate ADUs. But that's my point of view. I mean, I haven't heard from the board. I don't know where the board feels.
Just a quick comment, I mean, it's clear that the, the ADU bylaw.
Just a quick comment. I mean, it's clear that the, the ADU bylaw was, um, made dysfunctional on purpose. We all know that. And that, that's the reason why, um, you've only gotten one over twenty years. And, and the biggest thing that jumped out at me in the language was you can't make any changes to the exterior. Well, we got rid of that. Um, and then adding it, adding the, allowing it in accessory structures also allows flexibility. And the, and the big one, and this was, uh, Jack Creighton's idea actually was to, to allow the special permit approval, uh, instead of going with, with the owner, when the owner changes, it, it disappears to, to go, to flow with the land. That
Yeah.
allows people to capture the value that they've, they've created. Now, I mean, th- th- there's, there's nothing that would hu- uh, uh, harm someone in building a guest house as of right and then applying for, um, accessory dwelling unit as, as built, you know, if it's, if it's, if it's a, like a granny flat or something like that. The, the, so that what's being proposed does make changes. And I, I, I hear Woody that you, you, you think it doesn't go far enough. Um, and, and, and you, you, you make a good point. It's just that, um, we wanted to have something that we, we thought we could pass. And, and, and knowing that we've got six months to another town meeting where if, if we really wanna change it from ten a year, um, we could, or, or make any other structural, uh, changes. But we thought it was important to do something to allow these, um, and you select, and LA County, the, the big, the, the largest number of billing permits that are being pulled is ADUs because they changed their zoning. And the typical lots in the suburbs around Los Angeles are long and skinny with some kind of accessory structure out back. It's interesting. I mean, it's, it's something that's happening nationwide. Um, and we've been sitting on it for, for too long. We've known that it was dysfunctional for too long. Um, so I, I think doing something in, in, as far as the ADUs is better than doing nothing.
Yeah, but has the, has the, uh, uh, ZBW, uh, whatever it is, zoning bylaw committee, CBC, um, taking a look at the, uh, MAPC's recommendations on ADUs. They have, they have a, um, a model ADU, which my comments reflect an awful lot more closely than, than, than the language here.
We haven't looked at it.
ADUs, I've looked at, at them in twenty-five different towns, about twenty-two of them. Um, would be out of step with your language.
Under- understood.
They're more liberal, not less liberal.
Understood, but again, the committee has felt to this point to take an interim step rather than go the complete other way, because traditionally the town has frowned upon the development of apartments in the residential districts and having two dwellings on a lot. If you want to, if, if, if you wanna pitch the idea of pitching, pitching it completely, you know, what, what we might suggest, first of all, if we, if we pull this part, we're back to existing Article Fifteen stays as it is, and everybody agrees that is useless.
And then I, and then I'd, I promise that there'll be a, a full and open discussion of this.
Then, 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 then the al- the alternative to this, we'll get our mandate at town meeting, is that we separate out that section and either in the main part of our, you know, we're, we're gonna have multiple steps of the vote here on Article Four, because there's changes at Article Two that go with it. We're moving common driveways from Article Seven into Article Four, blah, 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 blah. There are multiple steps. We could make it a step. A separate vote to say, do you wanna do ADUs this way or do you wanna do it that way? We're clearly going to consolidate, get rid of the existing Article Fifteen, consolidate it into Article Four. Do you wanna do it this way or do you wanna do it that way? I don't necessarily have a problem doing that, but I, I just want you to understand the committee's thinking was that's not what the town wants yet. But.
Well, I'm, I'm so glad that you guys, and I'm not, I'm, it sounded a little snarky, but I'm so glad you guys know what the town wants and doesn't want. I'm not sure about that.
Well, again, we all rely on our experience, Woody. And we all have different experiences and perceptions. And yes, there's a lot of change going on in town and it's hard to read it all, but, uh, you know, we do the best we can and.
And Charlie, do you have your hand up?
No, no.
Or you're just waving?
And, and I think we also all have a sense, um, you know, how much real radical change flies in any type of community where we tend to be a conservative bunch around here as a whole. And I, you know, so I, I mean, I, I don't mind doing that and suggesting it back to our committee. And we're meeting again on the eighteenth, not next Monday to, uh, say, let's separate the ADU piece. And one, one of the other choices, our, you know, our suggestion, Woody's suggestion, or the MAPC suggestion is going to be submitted into Article Four and whatever section it's, it's ending up in. I forget what it's, four point four or whatever it is. I, I, I don't have a huge problem with doing that. And we'll see.
Try to see if we can hear from some of the zoning board. Rather than me. Anybody wish to opine or?
No, none of you were shy, I know that. I'd rather you be not shy here than to all of a sudden get up to town meeting like last spring, please.
From what I've read in these.
Yeah.
You know, I think things are more much more well organized than they were. You can actually find what you need to find without having to hunt through four or five different articles.
Yeah.
Um. That said, there's been a whole bunch of paper that we've gotten in the last week. And I haven't really been able to sit down, put things side by side, look at everything. And I, I need some time to do that.
I hear you.
And, you know, like.
What about the ADU issue, that discreet issue that we've just been discussing? I mean, we can try to put that issue to bed maybe, or at least give the, uh, direction for me to go back to the ZBC where.
I think I think that's a substantive change. So, you know, if your charge is just to reorganize things, that goes beyond the charge. Um, whether it's something that would hang everything up at town meeting is another question. Um, I, I know that the ADU bylaw right now is more or less useless.
Right, yeah.
And and I also know that there is a real shortage and demand for um, less expensive and smaller sized housing for people who wanna, you know, wanna sell their principal residence, but stay in town. Um, there's just, there's nothing available for them. And I think that was the whole purpose behind the ADU bylaw in the first place. It just is ineffective.
Um, yeah.
But that's a no, it's a substantive town meeting decision. And, and I don't think that there's any real guidance on policy behind that. I suspect that there would be a great deal of sentiment in favor of making the ADU accessibility a lot more simple for people. Um, you know, being able to put things over a garage, being able to opt the outside of your home to do it. But, you know, I don't know that for sure and.
No, well, that's the, that's the part we've done. The question is, do we can, the, the real question is, do we keep a cap on the number that can be developed as a means of controlling how many apartments are developed on residential properties, or do we not? Or we do just open, open up the door to every house in town having the potential to do it. That's, that's the question I think that.
Somewhat of an overstatement, isn't it?
Well, that's.
If it's detached, if it's a, if it's a, if it's a change in purpose, I think those are special permit items. If it's, if it's an interior.
Oh, I would, I would always make it by special permits, so that we have some control over it. But the question is, do we, do we limit the number that can ultimately be developed in the town? And we have twenty-two hundred
uh, single-family dwellings in town, plus or minus ten a year. What's that? It's less than, I mean, it's nothing.
Alright.
It's, it's half one percent.
Takes twenty-five years to get to ten percent.
Yeah, I mean, the, limiting it to ten is, is, is me, is meaningless in my estimation. I'd rather see this article pulled, leave what's there, but promise the town that we will thoughtfully take a look, not just at a, at a linear solution, but a couple of options. And if, if you think, uh, we're, we're going too fast and far, fine. You, that's option B. And, and let the town decide, but, um, ten, ten units a year is nothing.
Alright, well, that's fine, but I'm not gonna pull art, not gonna pull all of Article Four over the ADU.
What, is it possible to do two articles on the warrant?
I just said, we would do Article Four in steps. As we are going to do, Article Four, the, the warrant article has multiple steps to implement the change to Article Four. Because with it comes, uh, the deletion of Article Fifteen to consolidate it into this. It, it, it involves some definitional changes in Article Two, because terminology has changed. And it involves the consolidation of the common driveway regulation. Um, from, uh, Article Seven into Article Four. And then there was something we took out of Article Eight last spring regarding, uh, temporary structures. And we slapped it into Article Four, and it really belongs in Article Five. And that's where it's being proposed to be moved. So it's already, it's, it's already a three-step vote. And we can, we can, there's nothing that would prevent us from separating out this and saying, here are the alternatives. The existing Article Fifteen, which nobody wants, a interim step that the ZBC has first proposed, and either the Woody slash MAPC approach, or a, an approach that doesn't have the cap on it. And let the town decide that as to which one of those sections is going to go in to where it's slotted to go in to Article Four. And that can be done.
I think that that's, you know, I.
I'm not gonna pitch the whole article because of that.
Right. And I don't think you should, but I think that, I think that it is a significant enough policy and impact change that town meeting needs to really have it isolated, focused and thought about. And if, if town meeting is not ready to do it this time, you know, they can always not pass it and hold it for next.
They, well, they can indefinitely postpone.
Right.
And then we'll live with Article Fifteen for another six months.
Yeah, my estimation, that's better than, than making a sort of partial change. And then everybody gets a little weary about, you're back again in six months, you're back again. So, I mean, I think we oughta have a couple of options for people, let them decide and say, we're gonna.
Alright, fine. The differences are easy enough to explain to people, so I don't have a problem. And we'll take that to the ZBC next week and, uh, and we'll make a decision and that'll, you know, yeah, we'll, we'll tell that to the planning board and the planning board will.
And I don't think that, I don't think the town will mind having a slightly truncated town meeting anyway.
It's not.
Discussion.
And it's an, it's, it's an easy difference to argue, so, uh. And, and we may agree with you and say, no, forget, forget our interim step. Let's go the MAPC route. Okay? Alright, let's just put that in there, but, uh, alright, um.
It may be an easier sale if you give people a couple of, uh, you know, more time to digest the issues, I think.
Yeah, I hear you. Well, apparently, so you know, the, the select board, we were going to have a public forum like we did last spring to roll out these articles ahead of time. The select board is taking charge of that this time. They intend to do some type of public forum about all the warrant articles, including these two. And so we're gonna be part of that process. I assume that's gonna take place in October at some time. So there'll be some pre-discussion before town meeting. Um, your comment about the houses about nineteen, nineteen fifty-five, so.
Yeah.
That's in our existing bylaw.
Yeah.
And that and your comment number six and this ADU thing kind of all go together in that we are taking the approach that the community will not support widespread development of multifamily housing in the residential districts. And I'll get to the MBTA's housing choice in a moment and your comment about zero North Main. But following on that approach, we, we are not proposing the change for the older houses. Why it's in the bylaw to begin with, I don't know. I don't think anybody who ever wrote it is still around, but.
Well, keep in mind, it was, it was thirteen, basically thirteen houses built thirteen years or more ago, or less than thirteen, we, we didn't want it. Now it's less than sixty-eight. This was a, to my mind, an interim concern. This all came in, you know, in the, you know, boom time. I mean, it was after the Korean War and
Yep.
so on and so forth. Um, you know, housing was going up all over the hillside and so on and so forth. But that, but a sixty-eight-year-old freeze on, you can't convert a sixty-seven-year-old house.
I, I hear you. But again, it, it follows the philosophy of not allowing unrestricted multifamily development in the residential districts.
But, excuse me, Tom, I, I brought that up to the judge and the judge was like, I don't really know why it was nineteen fifty-five. I mean, that's when zoning was enacted.
Right.
But, um, she, she was like, I just don't wanna change it. And I, and I was like, what about fifty years? You know, would that make some sense? And she's like, she, she just didn't wanna get into it. And I, I have to, I'm, I'm like, uh, okay. I mean, it, it.
I mean, these things work against.
Some kind of logic.
These things work against property rights, I think, and, and housing rights. Uh, a, a lot of this stuff conspires to pre- prevent more economic, uh, living, yeah, in this town, be it, be it elders aging in place or starter, starter dwellings for young couples or.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you had the choice, you'd, you'd do the, um, two-family as of right instead of an ADU. I mean, I think there's more flexibility in that.
Again, but that has not, that is not perceived as to been the governing um, principle of the town for the last, you know, however many years since our home.
It's been in the bylaw.
Well, it, it's been in the bylaw since day one or whatever, in sixty-nine at least. And again, I don't think anybody here can say that there is some large sentiment to develop multifamily housing all over town willy-nilly. I don't think anybody wants that.
I don't think anyone's really thought about it though, Tom. I don't think we've been disgusted to any extent.
That may be, but you know, I.
You may be making.
But there, there are always a couple of exceptions and they, they usually would be small. But what about this transit district thing where you've got, got down no for multifamily housing in residential districts? Which says you can't do it.
Let me, let's talk about this for a minute, minute. So housing choice, the, the state has provided us with a consultant. And I, as I reported to the bylaw committee, the uh, they have met in the daytime with myself on three occasions, I believe, and Clark was at one of them. And the marching orders, and these come from the, you know, with agreement of the select board is that first of all, the housing choice has to be developed primarily within a half mile of the transit stations, either Cohasset or North Citrus. That takes out zero North Main Street. It's not within that circle. So zero North Main Street has got nothing to do with housing choice. If, if, if it's gonna be developed as they propose it, it's a forty B project. That's the only way they can do it. Housing choice is not gonna save them because we can't stretch the district over there. It's not within the parameters.
You're not allowed to. I, 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 I thought if the half mile didn't work, that, that would expand.
Well, that would be an awful large expansion to get to.
I know it would be, but, um.
But anyway, so, so.
Let me just, the, the big picture with housing choice is states pegged us for nineteen percent growth of high density. In fact, our consultant has more like thirty percent growth uh, figured out in, in, and, and it's, I think, it, it's a, it's a pickle. I mean, I I mean, obviously, whatever gets zoned isn't gonna get built overnight. But, I mean, it took, it took fifty years for forty B to create ten percent.
Yeah, but, but Clark, I mean, I, I think I'm on the same wicket you are. If, if you've got no down, no means no. If it's a special permit or some other sort of device, it doesn't mean yes. It simply means it's got to be evaluated carefully. But if you have a no,
Yeah.
Means you can't comply with state law.
So how, how, the, the housing, the tar. So how, the the housing, the target for the housing choice district at the moment. And we are going, the the housing choice, what we do to change the bylaw to accommodate housing choice will come up in the spring. And last night, we decided the Z B C as a whole is gonna meet with the consultant as soon as we can after town meeting at a night me- meeting, so sometime in November. And everybody will be notified about that, so everybody can be there and hear with their presentations. And right now, they've been given the marching orders of to create an overlay district on three A. Only on commercial properties, not in any residential property. And at the moment, they have proposed, and 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 they were told, try to consider both stations to break it up somewhat. And they have proposed a small area on the town line within the half-mile of the North Citrus Station and a larger district. Um, near the Cohasset Station. Now, there's challenges that it has to be contiguous. Um, there's wetlands and things to deal with. Um, and they have met the minimum forty-three acres, but the density could possibly be higher than the six thirty-eight units, and that's a policy question we have to address as a board, and and the Select Board primarily, it's their policy decision, frankly, not ours. And that, the marching order to develop an overlay district on three A is consistent with the philosophy of the Z B C, and we think of other boards in town and citizens is not to allow multifamily development in the three residential districts. At all. Now, you wanna do a conversion to a two-family and you don't wanna have any restriction on that, we can discuss that one. But I don't think there's any sentiment to start having apartment buildings in R A, B, and C. And I know Clark is an advocate for other types of development, tiny homes, you know. What do you call them, pocket communities or whatever you call them?
Neighborhoods instead of mid-rise.
And you know, we 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 are going to review our cluster development bylaw, maybe that's a place where we approach that, but but, you know. The sentiment is not to encourage wide-scale or any scale multifamily development in R A, B, and C. And so that leaves the Zero North Main Streets of the world out of luck under regular zoning as they are at the moment. They will, I can't imagine by any stretch of the imagination, get into a housing choice district because they're just too far away. And they're left at forty B, that of course falls on you guys, but um, that's, again, that's the approach of what we're looking at going forward.
And what's interesting is, we we haven't talked about the edges of the residential districts or where the boundaries are at all as a part of our effort. Certainly, you know, that's, that's something that's, that's a fairly comprehensive ac- activity to to look at, but it hasn't been looked at, not by us.
Yeah, we, the the approach to Article Three at best, the suggestions about Article Three is to consolidate some districts by maybe consolidating the Polyglot and Harbor and consolidating some of the commercial districts on three A, because we have all these other things, technology business and whatever else that we haven't really utilized as something separate and distinct. But we have not ever, and this goes back to the bylaw working group, discussed changing the actual boundaries of any of the districts in town. But.
Yeah, I I would like to really, this is a zoning board meeting, let's just invite other people to speak on on this. Surely well, most of you people have, you know, opinions, points of view, and how we should proceed, if we should proceed at all.
Not on the A D U, Article Four. Four point one A, B, one, use may not emit any smoke of a shade darker number two on the Ringelman smoke chart. Now, who's gonna, one, who's gonna enforce that? Two, I believe you, that would prohibit any uh bonfires, even though you get the permit from the fire department in the state of Massachusetts, which you can have one.
So first of all, let me just say, I would not hope we would can the whole effort based on an obscure section that rarely comes up in any of our regulations. But currently, we have a bylaw provision about not emitting smoke. And I believe the judge's reasoning behind this is you have no measure for that. And looking in to put into some kind of objective measure that I presume people in the industry use to measure smoke emissions, because right now we have nothing to measure it by, so what do you do today? Well, the reality is, rarely if ever comes up. And and it's not something that to.
Here's my concern, we're we're a very affluent town getting more affluent. And the, and people are getting more litigious, and if I want, was upset, as Charlie would point out, with my neighbor's bonfire or with my neighbor per se, I and I was lucky enough to look at the this provision. Um, I would wanna hire a lawyer and prevent them from doing all sorts of things.
Well, then what do you suggest as an alternative, just simply saying?
Take it out, because the language in there talks about, talks about, um, uh, what is it? Offensive percent, yes, it's judgmental, but I would rather do judgmental than uh or excessive noise and vibration and and smoke, judgmental rather than something on the Ringelman scale, but that's, you know.
The the noxious uses, we have a whole laundry list of noxious uses that are prohibited in our current bylaw. This is essentially that carried over.
And I doubt it, I mean, as Charlie said, as Charlie said, we'll we'll never, we'll never apply this, we'll never enforce this.
Excuse me, but then how do we enforce it now, since there is a provision about smoke in our bylaw and the noxious uses?
The good news is, nobody knows it's here. But, you know.
And that doesn't mean they're all of a sudden going to have clairvoyance and know- knowledge that it's there in the future. The judge only suggested that there be some objective measure of what is offensive as you can do with noise, with decibels and things of that sort, for smoke. If you wanna just simply say, leave it the way it is, that's fine, but then it has no measure, or and then you're essentially saying that any smoke from my neighbor carried over that I don't like, I can call up John and have him slap an enforcement.
Okay, well, we don't have any decibel measures anyway, so, I mean, this this is the only one with that's specific and I know where it came from. Um, but stupid, anyway, what what about other people, Mike, what about you, what about you, Matt, Lee?
Well, you know, I mean, having been of the meetings, um, you know, I'm I I I I think I'll stay away from some of the macro issues about um, uh, accessory use dwellings and that sort of thing is the right number. Um, but I say that, you know, I think that the the judge and the the committee have done, I think, a of trying to, you know, uh, bring a some center and consolidation and you know, uh, uh, some common changes that are that are overdue in terms of the, you know, over complexity and to the uh 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 of of the bylaws, so, you know, I I would be very low to kind of uh um throw away out of, I think, quite good changes um on a on a few uh few things that that, you know, some folks may feel, you know, kind of weird or wonderful or or just not practicable. That sort of thing. Um, you know, I I I I, you know. All I can report back is that, you know, there's a lot of time and effort and thought and comparison to other, what other towns have, how other towns have approached, um you know, the same similar problems and and uh, you know, the the I just really experienced and, you know, I I can just say you know, she's, she's, I I think her experiences, she's seen based on, you know, the cases that come before, where kind of the soft spots and in 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 bylaws, because there the soft spots are where you end up with litigation. Well, you know, I I I think what she's done um had quite positive overall. Uh, is it perfect? No, but, you know, I think we can all, you're never gonna get perfection with this stuff there. It's just too complex and and capture all possible, you know, scenarios and with 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 with. But, yeah, you know, so all I'd say is, look, you know, again. We should, I think, try and 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 be positive, you know, should should point out we think, you know, maybe the committee can kind of, you know, take out a pencil and can, you know, kind of, you know, do a little more work to get things running right. But I I would certainly recommend that uh the Z B A to try and blow this whole thing up over a couple of, um, you know, all actions to, you know, uh, isolated provisions or areas. Overall, I think it's been pretty good work, but that's kind of my thoughts, Woody.
All right, fair fair enough, how about you, Matt?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think I have the strongest opinion on it, I think maybe I've been here seven, eight years, I look at it more of you know, based on the proven history, what are some of the language pieces that um could help us moving forward? Um, a lot of it seems to be the housekeeping piece, um. You know, I kind of lean on others that have been, you know, kind of experienced it for more years to kind of nitpick at, like, does this actually help us or hurt us? I kind of do see the opinion of, um I guess both Tom and and our board have kind of summarized that we're not, we're not kind of where we might wanna be based on, you know, the fact that it's a process. It sounds like it's a step towards where we wanna get. Um I probably have to study some of the um particular languages to make sure, to your point, I think the town is pretty sensitive as to, um you know, just wanted to make sure that the boards aren't stepping in and kind of retracting their um their rights and kind of how that's summarized uh uh in the warrant. So I guess the long story is like, I don't feel like I'm the, I've got the strongest opinion on it. I think the committee, obviously, just by the amount of hours that they put into it and the amount of meetings that they've had and everything. Um, you know, hats off to to the committee for that effort, cuz uh I know it's not something I'd have the bandwidth for, but um you know, I think, I think the maintenance piece of it, the housekeeping piece of it is a step in the right direction, and maybe we continue to noodle on um some of the pieces that are uh deal breakers for us, and maybe we could, um, you know, red flag those to the group.
Okay, let's let's move over to Lee and then to Charlie. Lee, what what's your take on all this?
I I agree with Matt, I mean, and and David, actually, cuz I I skimmed through some of it um yesterday and a little bit this morning and, um I I understand how much work that the committee's done and um everybody involved in this. And I actually would also like to have a meeting where we could um hear from the judge why she made the recommend recommendations.
I think Charlie.
Again, uh, begin with, uh, on lights, uh, uh all lights and other sources of illumination, uh, uh uh must be shielded from direct view at normal level. Now, how can you build a house that uh shows no, no lights on the uh from somebody looking at? And we act, who has to enforce that rule?
Well, may I answer that?
Yeah.
And well, fir- first of all, I just looked at the bylaw, the measurement of smoke about the Ringelman chart is actually in our bylaw right now, four point three J one.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, I I I'm I'm almost positive that the whole noxious use section was just moved wholesale without any changes to regarding, but dark sky may be a change, and that is something that the planning board at least has regularly, and Clark can speak to this. Since he's often the one who suggests it and brings it up and wants to see it happen. Is dark sky compliant lighting is something we are putting in as a regular condition. If we get a special permit or a large home review where we have the opportunity to comment on the lighting, dark sky is one of the conditions. It's a regular part of our permitting, and so we thought it's time to bring it into the bylaw.
We have it in the bylaw to a degree, because we require shielding of light so they don't go off the property.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's just saying what we've been doing in practice with like some time.
Just out of curiosity, how much smoke is a number two on the Ringelman scale?
I have no, I, who knows, the the U S Bureau of Mines, how much, you know. I don't know, John can tell us. He's up on the U S Bureau of Mines handbook and that, but it's been in our existing bylaw, and again, it was one of those things where the judge said.
You know, the the best. The best argument is that nobody's ever brought it up, probably because they don't know it's here. But if it were to be brought up, I think it would um cause, cause unnecessary difficulty for property owners and and citizens. I don't see how it helps to know that you've got to have zero point three grains per foot of uh air pollution. Um, we don't have any uh quantitative measure of um decibels, which I think would be a maybe a more concern, but be that as it may, um, I don't see how this is kind of ad- advancing the ball down the field.
But again, it is, it is in our current bylaw and has been for God knows how long.
That doesn't make it good.
I know, but if you pitch it and have nothing, then people do whatever the heck they want.
Not, not really, if you take a look at special permit and and what you have to, you know, some of the standards and special permit, they that deals with noise and air pollution and things of that sort, but it does give uh this board and your own board where special permits uh apply to the planning board, it does give it a a judgment call. That's my point.
I will, I will pledge to bring up throwing out the noxious use section rest of the board, but I.
My my biggest concern
It's not a big issue.
And specifics that um take away judgment call. And um, one of the premises that I mentioned in my little, you know, kind of summer, Pre-C or whatever, you know, behind zoning and and planning in the in the state and probably every state, is that there's local knowledge and local um, you know, common sense that that applies. And it's very difficult to sort of say thou shalt or shalt not in every case. That's why we're paid all this money to be in these boards. But um, that's my concern, one of my concerns. I would trust your board's judgment and my board's judgment when it comes to noxious fumes or or lights that spill over into the neighbors.
Yeah, I know that, but you know, you know, there'll be a lawyer, you'll tell, you know, there'll be a lawyer who'll say you can't regulate it, you can't put it as in the condition, cuz you don't.
Oh, you can regulate it if it's a special permit uh situation.
If it's part of your special permit criteria, like, you know.
Yeah, I'd like to see more special permitting and less and fewer no's or fewer variances, frankly.
Well, I think, though, I think a lot of this has to do with, you know, existing properties. Somebody suddenly starts producing a bunch of smoke that wasn't there before, you do need some um mechanism for the building inspector to go out and say, you can't do that. And I, and I do think some of this stuff having an actual measurable, objective standard protects us legally. Um because you can't just say, well, it's too much smoke or.
Right, we can't, we can't.
Smells too bad.
Can't tell if you can't do it.
Standard that that one applies. And and I agree that it's not an issue. You you know, there's people in town are burning coal in their backyard. The only reason these things are in there is because if it comes up. If it comes up once or twice, it needs to be there.
Yeah, I the concern is it comes up in the commercial areas. You know, to be honest, and and we don't have at the moment large scale manufacturing or, you know, any kind of. Industrial use, but you know, we we allow for the possibility that that may exist. Um, if I if I may, I know Dave, Dave's got his hand up too, but I I. With limited time, there's just a couple of these bullets I want to just try to quickly address, but like I thought they, if you wouldn't permit Dave to speak, he's had his hand up. Where do you go? Dave, you're muted.
Hi, hi, sorry. I'll be very brief because I know the time we're coming to the end here, uh but it was to Woody's comment number five when you had, when you were talking about the nineteen fifty five. Um regarding restricting single family conversions, uh things like that, there might be. Where the zoning board looks at that and says, geez, we would like to, I'm talking about your zoning board, where you get, you look at that and say, geez, we'd like to move that year up. We think that that was, you know, put there at one moment in time and it needs to be updated or 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 whatever, and that's certainly fine. I mean, that that's what. Um, that's what the whole article is here for, is for the zoning board to look at it and come up with maybe other recommendations as well for things that were sitting in the bylaw. Uh that that is that we passed over to leave there because they were there for some reason, which we don't know. Um, so with with that one, like I said, uh uh I think if the it it's for the zoning board to look at the whole article, digest it and then and then. Come together and say, is that something that they wanted to but maybe change or or bring to a different date if there's some lags in it uh? Like that one, so. That that's what the whole process is about. And I'll I'll leave it there because I know we've got five minutes to go here.
Yeah, I just I want to quickly hit some of these other points. So you mentioned Airbnb's, that was the subject of one of our polls and actually. With the small poll number, the sentiment was to allow short term rentals in town. But we also put in a part about a fee, you know, getting a registration fee that the towns that allow it.
Okay, so that's embedded somewhere in the bylaw?
No, it's not. So the the this, so without the strong sentiment, um. Uh you know, the the committee decided not to put anything in it at this time, and that would be the future. And as I thought through it myself, I wrote something. But I'm almost thinking, and I said this to the select board the other night, of handing it to them as a general bylaw. Um, yeah, no, I I I. You know, the again, it was a small sample survey and we just didn't think. Uh, it was. Thought we had enough time in the summer to think through it to put it in the zoning by law, but it probably should be a general by law.
There there's a whole architecture with Airbnb's. Sometimes it can involve the board of health as well. Uh to check them over and you register it and so and and so that 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 brings it a whole bunch of other parties into it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and there's a registration and fee process that a lot of towns have and the select select board's ears picked up at that one.
Well, I raised it because I didn't see it.
Yeah, yeah. The inclusionary zoning are. So what we did with. In in when we permit, the planning board permitted the hotel project. We basically. The current bylaw gives you the choice of onsite, offsite, or fee and loo. But it doesn't list them in any sort of priority, and in our decision with the hotel project, we made it. In order of priority and they ultimately. Chose offsite and they actually have developed offsite units, one more than they needed to develop. Um, so the. Same principle was being applied here is to state these in an order of preference. Whereas we'd rather have actual units, be they onsite or offsite.
Would you guys be able to say? I want you to do the offsite and not the fee and loo, or is that the uh developer?
It's no, it's a discretion of the planning board, but.
Oh, all right.
So I'll I'll tell you that it's come up twice now. So in the hotel project. Economically, long term, it would not probably work having. Low income units with such uber high end units, and I I know that too from some personal experience with some project. In the village project at the gas station, offsite was allowed because. Because of the presence of James Brook under that building, it had some really tight constraints to be economically viable with the twelve units they were putting in, so. We allowed it in that case, and that who knows what will happen. The hotel developers went right out. They found an existing building, they converted it to a, you know, affordable that's on the list for the next thirty years. So we haven't added to the denominator of housing stock. We're getting four units where they were required to develop three, so. That ended up being a win win, but. So in the bylaw, in the change, we we are not otherwise changing anything substantively about it, but want to state the. Priority of. Actually developing units rather than make fee and loo the last possible choice.
As long as it's under your purview or your discretion and not the developers, I'd be all in favor. But the way I read, the way I read this, it didn't.
Yeah, I believe it at the current.
You know what? We wrote that, we made that change initially to inclusionary zoning. Mike Dickey was one of the strongest advocates for when he was on the planning board. For um the fee in lieu of an offsite uh being the the. At the discretion of the planning board and in being the last options.
I'm making a note to check that, but and and as far as fee and loo goes, you know, the current fee and loo provision says very little about how we determine the fee.
Yeah.
And at least what is written is an attempt to give some definition to that, but. You know, I I think the. The sentiment.
Well, I I would. My my objection here, but because but I was reading it. And probably falsely interpreting it to mean that the developer could decide which of these.
I made a note about that. I I thought the planning board had discretion, but I mean. The developer is going to take.
My my recollection was we pushed for for that 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 the planning book. Right there.
Well, I could look it up quickly, but I want to, I don't want.
No, don't, don't, don't take the time. I mean, if it's.
Far as your comment about the solar energy panels, so one of the driving forces of the changes to Article Four is that the judge is informed is that the Attorney General. His office is hot to trot. That the use articles and bylaws have to include stuff about solar and encouraging solar uses. And it's it can be an absolute deal breaker. They can throw out the rest of the bylaw despite its merits.
It was simply being ten degree issue.
Yes, so you know, we have discussed that with the Alternative Energy Committee, meeting with them again on Thursday. Um, we are allowing. I don't know if any of you are familiar, but when I drive to my office on River Street in Norwell, there's a house that also has a giant side lot. And they have a standing structure, a ground mounted solar crown. Um, so that would be permissible under our bylaw now as an accessory structure. And then we.
Tom, I think I think Woody's point of the ten degrees, most roofs aren't ten degrees unless.
They're thirty to forty five degrees. Now, if you mean set set off the roof regardless of its pitch. Ten degrees, that might make some sense. I'm not an expert.
Yeah. Which is more likely to be forty five.
And I think that's just a clarification you could make.
The main point of that, the main point of that is our current bylaw says nothing about. Uh, solar panels on people's roofs or or in the side yard as a standalone structure and. We allow them, but they're not permitted specifically, and the A G wants them. In your.
Whatever we have today is 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 a is but a pittance compared to what we'll have in ten years, I predict.
And as far as the large scale solar, we're not making any change to the fact that we have. An overlay district for that. We may change that when we revisit Article Three.
I thought that was a little restrictive, that's all.
Yeah, no, and it's probably was designed to be restricted, and I think that's something we have to revisit, but. We have solicited the input on both uh changes, other changes to the wind bylaw, the solar bylaw from the. Alternative Energy Committee, and we've told them those changes would be targeted for the spring. And that may be among them, but for the purposes of this bylaw, we're addressing the residential use, the small scale use that the A G wants us to. And we're covering that.
Okay, well, I here's what I would suggest. I would suggest the zoning board. Take a week or or more and think about the issues we've talked about and some that we haven't, and whether um. You know, the concern is great enough to uh merit uh. Um, going against Article Four or really working to mitigate or or. Minimize some of the small concerns and and get behind Article Four and ditto. The zoning bylaw um committee, uh some of this. Stuff can be fixed with language. I mean, if there's confusion over what a ten ten degree. Uh pitches for solar panel, that's probably easily done with, you know, four or five words. I don't know, but to Clark's point. You you couldn't prevent it from going on a house with a thirty degree pitch because that would work against the. State policy. I mean, you know, the no house in Cohasset would qualify with. A very few exceptions. So some of it you can fix with language, some of it you can fix in the spring. Uh you know, if this is a truly a reorganization as opposed to a content. And and some of it is is maybe um, uh you know, arguing over. Relatively small stuff.
You you know, I would say for the zoning board, if there's something that you guys are continuously confronted with that you don't think you should be. And that um would be a zoning bylaw change, that would be interesting to know about, something that's you feel is dysfunctional. And or an undue burden for applicants.
Yeah, and and I've already chimed in on on ADUs. I think that's a burden.
Yeah. Right, well, you've only seen one, so it's not a burden, but if you.
No, no, I've seen a lot, including my my neighbors up and down the street, but. Um.
Well. We all, we all know regulation has a point, and that's the community, you know. You speak of property rights, they're not open ended. The community zoning is constitutional.
I'll leave you with one other thought, and I know Dave has got something to say. My other thought is that. Um, rather than there, it seems to me there are too many no's in this table of use and not enough special permits or whatever. Um, I'd like to see more discretion given to both our boards in terms of applying judgment. There there that that isn't a carte blanche. Or automatic approval. Um, by any any stretch.
That that assumes that you think a special per, you think a special permit is a real tough standard, and that's not.
Well, I know it isn't that tough, but but no is a real tough standard, meaning no, and and there's somewhere in between there. You want to use, I think oftentimes, the wisdom of uh board members to decide, well, in this case. It wasn't so bad.
The the flip side of that is I can tell you communities I've appeared before where they give out special permits and variances like candy because. They'd have no controls and they have. They have nobody comes to their meetings to oppose it.
Well, I I I used one example and and I I might have exaggerated a little bit, but. When the auto body shop across in St. Anthony's burned. It it could have been replaced uh. You know, in the same footprint and 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 configuration, but it would be a body shop by right. Or the guy said, how about if I put in, I don't know, it's either three or four. Uh kind of mixed use uh units, professional, we insisted on professional offices in the first floor, not retail. And housing on the second floor. Uh and as I said in my little, the some of the neighbors didn't like the guy, but nobody wanted to see the auto body shop come back in. To that very. Compact residential area now. So in our, if it was wisdom, we agreed that a mixed use, a very small scale, three or four units. Mixed use was a lot better than a larger. Structure that would be, uh you know, um banging and painting and God knows what. And I think that's just a question of judgment. No one would have said, no, build your auto, build your uh auto body shop again. And I don't think that would have helped the neighborhood at all.
I I don't, I don't disagree because there are some things that were developed long before zoning that we wouldn't, we wouldn't have allowed a garage in that today.
But they're grandfathered.
They're grandfathered, and we have to deal with that and be flexible in those situations. I don't disagree that.
So anyway, just.
As far as scheduling goes. I know we talked about it our meeting last night. Did you have a meeting on the third?
We can have a special meeting. We haven't seen five. I mean, I've seen parts.
Yeah, no, you've seen, you've seen five in a. So five is going to come to you in the form that it's already been circulated, uh uh just the text because it has comment boxes which shows you. Really what hasn't really changed in it and. Is going to be useful, and then the judge, when she's done, hopefully by the end of this week, she promises she would have the warrant article version of it. And five as well is going to be in steps because it generates its own changes to definitions.
You're you're changing height. What else?
We're only changing, no, the in substance, we're only. Inserting a height limit on accessory structures. That's the only substance. We we put off. We put off a height change in the harbor because we started to talk about it and think through it, and it needs a little more study. Um. The rest of it is um. You'll you'll see that the changes are, a lot of it is just carried over and it's changes in terminology that are generated by these changes to Article Four, so. The 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 substance, if we do substance, if we do lot dimensions and if we do house size that we. Bandied about for the last two and a half years, those are going to require some study. It's going to require some expert analysis and, you know, we're going to undertake to do that.
Well, as long as you guys are committed to that, I I had a, I I got the 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 impression, my own impression. That this was sort of a one and out. I mean, whatever we saw was it for the next ten years.
No. Now, well, this this goes again to the scope. Again, there was a conflict, there's a conflict now between the charge, the working group had, and now that the bylaw committee has, and certainly what K P receives their charge to be. But I I again, last night we mentioned that as soon as this town meeting is over, there has to be a sit down. On what's coming.
The the nine o'clock leaves nine o'clock to nine ten. How about making a a sort of non. Lethal commitment to continue to look at these anomalies and things in the bylaw that. Should be either deleted, changed, or whatever. It doesn't have to be done all at at one fell swoop. It probably couldn't be digested. In that volume anyway. But rather than we've we're, you know, we've done it, like like uh dimensions. So which means we'll never look at frontage again for the next ten years.
No, that's not going to be.
I I know that, Tom, I know that. I mean, just just tell us that you're going to continue, you know, you you can't promise what's going to. Be the final outcome, but you can promise that it'll be looked at or challenged and and. See if we can come up with better solutions in some of these, that's all.
I mean, you you can expect the spring to deal with. Article seven, the parking. Um, eleven, the land alteration, and the only thought there is, do we go back to where it was originally drafted? Uh, ten, the cluster, nine and fourteen are the two. Uh watershed protection and the flood plain, which might be tied into a new climate change initiative, and that. With all due respect, might not be ready till fall of twenty four. Um, and then we're going to revisit three about whether we consolidate. Some of the zoning in the harbor on three and. And and I got, again, boundaries have never been discussed, but I suppose if we were to think about changing any boundaries, that's how we do it. Um, but again, in terms of meeting, I I I.
I've I've proposed that we meet by Zoom zoning board, but let let's take a week or so to.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm not available, I'm not available Tuesday, the nineteenth.
Okay.
Be available.
We'll we'll work it through Montana and and get something that's compatible, but is the is the zoning board. Amenable to, and again, it it, we're not talking about a whole evening. But, you know, maybe it's a half an hour, maybe it's forty five minutes, saying, look, I thought about this, um. Uh, Matt, you know, or or uh Mike, uh, you know, articulated a. Let let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater kind of approach and and uh. Um, you know, and if if there's going to be uh. Work done on some of these articles in a more substantive way down the pipe, whether it's six months or eighteen months. You know, I can live with a lot of that as long as there's progress being made. But why don't we meet as the zoning board and decide the position we're going to take at town meeting, or at least in the warrant, because. I don't think anything much will change between whenever we we meet and the publication of the more of the warrant. Or town meeting for that matter.
But we're still going to have the planning board's public hearings and the language could change, these articles.
Okay.
Change based on planning boards.
Um, well, maybe we maybe we should have a hurry up. I mean, a a a little sort of insert. Well, maybe we, maybe we should have a hurry up. I mean, a, a, a little sort of insert a. Um, you know, after your meeting, um, you know, a couple of days later, or maybe we, we, we steal a half an hour out of the October third. Hearing, as long as it doesn't violate the publication of the warrant.
Um, yeah, I, I.
You know, we could slip that into the agenda.
I, I, I might ask that. You. You scheduled something before the twenty-seventh, on the twenty-sixth about Article Five.
Okay, okay.
So that we heard your, I hear your initial reactions to Article Five before we go into the planning board hearing. I would encourage you all to. Listening on the planning board hearing and.
Hey, Montana, make a, kind of make a note on that one, all right, that we'll. We'll have an Article Five hearing before the planning board's meeting on the twenty-seventh. It may be only half an hour, but.
The, the other, the other thing would be. Uh, the other thing would be to have Judge Cutler come, and so if you, if the board members, after looking at Article Four, if they had any questions as well, uh, she could enunciate some of. Uh, the answers as well.
Whatever the procedure she had, it's going to take away her voice for a couple of days, but she'll be back in. Action, and then mid-October, she's gone on a vacation. She'll be back to town meeting. So I, I do want you to have the opportunity to hear.
Oh, sure. Well, Tom, why, why don't you think about it, and why don't you and I just sort of huddle together about? Do we need one? Do we need two? I'm, I'm kind of loath to. Have a whole bunch of meetings, but if we could either shoehorn any, I can appreciate something before your meeting on the twenty-seventh, and I can appreciate, maybe we could do a. Do a, a, a final, a final head count, a vote count on our meeting on the third and go from there.
All right, well, I appreciate your time tonight. On behalf of the committee, I appreciate your time, but. We, we've all worked very hard on this, so.
Yeah.
Like, let's, let's, let's respect all of the work that we all do.
Okay, well, I don't think anybody wants to throw the whole thing out, although I was a little bit miffed, but.
Let's, let's. Came on a little strong there, Woody.
Let's put that aside. Um. So we only, from a business standpoint, I. I don't know, we have to sort of formally conclude this session, but um. Montana, my, my read on this whole thing, surprising, is that we were hoping to start in-person meetings in November, and now we can't do that. Do we know why?
Um, there is a lot of behind the scenes coordination going on right now. Um, Christine or Cassandra and Justin. Justin had a conversation um, today that. They just need to hold off having um, in-person meetings for the board until post-January, just so they can figure out scheduling, and there's no mishaps. They just want to take it slow. Um, so I'm sorry to break the.
John, do you have anything, any insights?
Cause Cassandra told us that it was kind of an equipment issue. I mean, you know, we're pushing for it as well, and. I don't know if anybody has a conflict at Wilcox Commons on Wednesday nights when we meet, but your nights conflicted select board, so, you know, I, I. I understand it's somewhat of an equipment issue. There's a Zoom. Camera at Wilcox, there's one in the town, there's one at the library, and then the school committee as well. And I don't know if they're getting any more, but they have four, and they just got to work, you know, the library. Meeting room sometimes might be too small, you know, so they got to work some things out, but we were told it was an equipment issue, but.
John, what do you know?
I, 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 I think uh, the state wants us to um. Have the meetings virtual, if we, if we do it, uh, over me, so it's, so it's a combination of open meeting and having it accessible. So I think uh, that's uh, that's what they're trying to work out, uh. Now, it's not that we can't have them live, it's that it also has to be accessible to the public via the internet. So that's a. The hurdle we'll try to get through now, but I, I, it might get a little clearer a couple of days to see what's, what's available to set that up.
Sooner the better, because we only meet once a month, and we can be flexible, I hope, in terms of which week and so on and so forth, so we don't need to. Schedule conflicts, let me put it that way. We can try to avoid.
Yeah, I mean. Again, with the amount of quick, zoom equipment we have, you, you and the select board could be meeting in two places on the same night. We have that capability, so it's hard to understand what the. Real holdup is, but I realize there's a lot of moving parts and the state has an interest in.
Feel like I'm living in two thousand and five, but. Um. Anyway, um, could, could I get a, an approval, uh, approval from the zoning board of the meeting minutes of August first? I only had two little one-letter changes, Montana, you'd be happy.
Be all set from the ZBC?
Yeah, I think so. I think, Tom, why don't you and I huddle separately about scheduling, uh, you know. What, the next couple of weeks.
Uh, great. Thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Lee, what, you have something? You're muted, so it's kind of hard to.
I was just saying goodbye to Tom and David.
So I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of August first, twenty twenty-three. With the exception of one or two little, you know, um, grammatical changes. Go get a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, Woody Chitikai?
David Morrissey.
Earl Higginson, I.
Lee Dyer, I.
Michael Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
All right, so they're approved, and the next zoning board meeting of October third, does anybody have a known conflict? Okay. Dave, you okay? You're good? So why don't we sleep in this for a few days and see whether we. Um. How much will modify my, my objections?
Okay.
Okay, so I'd make a motion to.
Woody, the other thing, I, I can't, I can't raise my hand to take it because I'm kind of going to be on what issue, but uh. I, were we going to sign the one from tonight pending a new site plan? Do we have to sign that to somebody or?
Um, since we're unlikely to, to, well. What's the sentiment of the board? I mean, a new site plan is somewhat pro forma, it's necessary, but. From the looks, I mean, I don't know how many have been able to walk the property, but. I didn't. See any, anything that jumped out at me to say that we should turn it down or had any. Reason for significant modification. I mean, it is way in the back forty.
Yeah, it looks like pretty simple and unobtrusive.
Well, does somebody want to volunteer for a draft under the presumption that at least a week in advance will get a site plan so you can incorporate the, um. Whatever facts need to be referenced?
Um, I, I haven't done one in a while, Woody, so I'll take it.
Montana Mike is going to be a good soul. And take it. Okay, thank you for that, Matt, um. So we should be, have the docket clear there. Anything coming up next month we know of right here today?
There is an application that was submitted for thirty-four Stockbridge Street um, from Campbell and Smith. Um. Nothing really to report. It's gonna, I think it's gonna be easy.
Okay, John, and where, where are things on Black Forest Lane? I, I have, have they progressed toward, I mean, I know that they applied for an A and R on. Number seventy, and that was turned down.
Yeah, so seventy had, has been in front of uh, the planning board, oh, probably at least three times. And turned down for the AR. Uh, their ninety-four Black Forest Lane is coming at the next planning board meeting with the subdivision. Control to widen the road, add a turnaround, and, and with the, adding three additional homes. So I think that's a. Uh, I think we might see seventy come after ninety has, has done that process.
Will any of that land in our desks?
What's that?
Will any of that, those items uh, require zoning?
No, I, I think through, through subdivision, they should be able to, uh, you know, satisfy all their. Needs if they approve the road, um, the planning board, so that they're going to need some modifications, but uh, I think it would be an improvement.
Okay, and the other question I had, and we can all go home, it was from one of you, I don't remember who. Um, a query on the old Atlantica site that it's been not months, but years, and. Is there actual progress made, or is this just sort of sitting there derelict?
Uh, no, they have, um, they are in front of the. Um, sewer commission now, they've had one visit, sewer commission requested some additional information. To clarify where the lines are going, they had a camera, uh, a couple of lines going to the street. To get that information to Brian Joyce, and then I believe they're scheduled next, uh, next week to the sewer commission. Hopefully to square away. Uh, we haven't issued the permit yet, uh, and I think they had to pay a fee to the water department to, to. Uh, determine where the water lines are running, uh, for the building, so they're going to separate the meters or have. One meter for the all the units, but that's, they're working that out with the water farmer as well.
Okay.
So hopefully.
Part of the board? About pending or old approvals? Okay. How about, anybody have any uh, interest in adjournment?
Yeah, I do. I will make a motion.
Okay, good, we got, you heard from that. Who wants a second?
Second.
All right, Charlie seconded. Okay, move him seconded. All in favor, Woody Chitikai?
David Morrissey.
Earl Higginson, I.
Lee Dyer, I.
Uh, Mike Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
Okay, so we will cycle back before the twenty-seventh, and um, relative here on the fifth. On Article Five rather, and um. Your take on, on my concerns, which certainly are not all worthy of carrying forward. Some maybe, but not all. Okay, all right. All right, you guys have a nice rest of the week. Thank you, John, for, for hanging in there.
No, that's okay.
Okay.